What do you think about me at the beginning kind of talking about the daycare situation? I allow people to go, but I will allow them to come up on the agenda.
Good morning and welcome to City Hall. We're going to get started with the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Rick Denny is with the Jesus House. He's going to lead us in the invocation this morning. Afterwards, I'll ask Councilman David Greenwell if he'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance. But would everybody please stand?
Please bow with me. Dear gracious and loving Father, on behalf of all who are gathered here today, I thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Father, today we lift our voice in adoration and thanksgiving for making us stewards of this wonderful city. We pray for your light to shine in this city, for all to see for the rest of time as a city on a hill. We pray that those who are known in this city and even those who are not feel your love, protection, and peace in this your city. From those living in homes to those who sleep in the shadows and everyone in between, we pray for your covering over them. Thank you for loving us according to your boundless and gracious nature. We thank you for our leaders who are charged to promote peace, order, and justice. Father, continue to instill the wisdom to govern in these our faithful leaders. Give them a sense of the needs of all of your people and the confidence to do that which is right and good according to those they serve and according to you. Father, let them be joined in the spirit of unity and work through the bond of peace for the greater good of this wonderful city.
John Montgomery is here today. And Marilyn, I'm going to ask both of you to come forward.
We pray for the work and the agenda set before them today and all of those in attendance
We have a proclamation on glass of the clerk to read it, actually a citation. But John
today. We are thankful for this work and we pray that each task moves us toward becoming
Montgomery has been a federal consultant for the city of Oklahoma City for 38 years.
a better and brighter city. It is in your most blessed name I pray. Amen.
He was originally brought on when Patience Ladding was the mayor, and that was before Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic many of you in this room were born. But I certainly remember that time period. And for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for so through the years, John has had his fingerprints on a number of exciting projects that have come through the city of Oklahoma City. And we have a citation to read. And I'll ask all. people to listen in just how one person's accomplishments can transfer through many, many city council representatives and many mayors through the years. So Francis, if you will.
Whereas John Montgomery has served as a liaison between the city of Oklahoma City and our federal government since 1975. Whereas John's knowledge of the legislative process, federal budget, and eye for the financial detail has enabled the city of Oklahoma City to leverage federal funds that made possible a long list of infrastructure improvements, including I-235, the Mariupol Gardens, the Otoka Pipeline, the Begee Creek Reservoir, Oklahoma School of Science and Mathematics dorms, and many others. Whereas John has been able to lead Oklahoma City to a wide assortment of federal matching funds that have augmented MAPS projects, including trails and environmental enhancements along the Oklahoma River, the passenger boats that provide transit along the Oklahoma River, and much more. Whereas in the wake of Alfred P. Murrah Federal Building bombing, John was able to work with city leadership, the Speaker of the House, and President of the United States to help secure tens of millions of dollars in direct federal emergency disaster assistance grant money, an additional $12 million grant for the revolving loan program to assist in the restoration of businesses in the central city economic area. Whereas John assisted in locating $800 million in federal funding through the congressional delegation for the I-40 crosstown, funding that was the largest single transportation project grant nationally for one of the years. Whereas he has provided invaluable guidance to city council members, city staff, and six Oklahoma City mayors, including Patience Ladding, Andy Coats, Ron Norick, Kirk Humphreys, Guy Liebman, and Mick Cornet. Whereas his political acumen and friendly bipartisan demeanor has served the city well through seven presidential administrations, including Presidents Gerald R. Ford, James E. Carter Jr., Ronald W. Reagan, George H. W. Bush, William J. Clinton, George W. Bush, and Barack H. Obama. Whereas John's ongoing counsel and innovative approaches to federal-city relations over the past 40 years have helped the city navigate political issues from CDBG funding to internet sales tax, and has been instrumental in Oklahoma City's growth and prosperity. Now therefore Mick Cornet, the mayor of the city of Oklahoma City hereby commends John Montgomery for his many years of service to Oklahoma City and wishes him all the best in his retirement.
Let's show our appreciation to the Montgomerys and all they've done.
Thank you very much. I just want to mention Marilyn's from Oklahoma City too. I grew up here. And obviously, a huge asset and working for the city in Washington when everybody came to town. Basically, what this is all about is the people up there. As long as you can get them connected with what we're trying to do with the federal government, it works. And I think the whole, the importance of elected officials is really what this is all about. And so I want to thank you guys for keeping me on and for allowing me to be able to do what I really like to do. And then thank you Jim Couch, who is the man behind the scenes and in front of the scenes and all over often. But thanks very much, Mayor.
Thank you. It won't be the same without you. I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, Marilyn. We also have a proclamation today because it is Immigrant Heritage Month each month. I'm going to ask Akash Patel, David Castillo, and Reverend Justin Lindstrom to come forward. We have a proclamation. I'll ask the clerk to go ahead and start reading it while we get settled.
Whereas generations of immigrants from every corner of the globe have built our country's economy and created the unique character of our nation. Whereas immigrants continue to grow businesses, innovate, strengthen our economy, and create American jobs in Oklahoma City and throughout Oklahoma. Whereas immigrants have provided the United States with unique social and cultural influence, fundamentally enriching the extraordinary character of our nation. Whereas immigrants have been tireless leaders, not only in securing their own rights and access to equal opportunity, but have also campaigned to create a fair and more just society for all Americans. Whereas we recognize and celebrate those countless contributions throughout our history and continuing to the present day. Now therefore Mick Cornet, the mayor of the city of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim the month of June 2014 as Immigrant Heritage Month in Oklahoma City.
Let's show our appreciation and admiration.
It is an honor to be here this morning and to receive this proclamation for Immigrant Heritage Month. We all are immigrants and, you know, the Native Americans in Oklahoma are the ones who can lay stake and claim to this land more than we can. But I think more importantly, on the national level and state level and then also the city level, immigration reform is so vitally important. I see a lot of people come to the cathedral where I serve who are in great fear. Fear that their family might be torn apart, fear that they may not have a job the next day. And many of these people, if not all of them, want to work hard. They want to be a part of our social structure, our economic structure, and our culture. And we are better for that. And our economy is better for that. And we are better for that because it's the same reason why we are all here. And so we are thankful that June is Immigration Heritage Month. Thank you.
As we get started this morning, it would probably be a good idea for us to kind of, I think, have an open conversation here about the daycare center issue. Because I know many people in the audience, I'm suspecting, are here today not just to see us vote on appropriations and the consent docket, but they have a specific issue. And I think much of it was well intended by our city staff to try and draw us into state law and compliance with the state laws. I think though, we probably ought to go back and see what other municipalities are doing and how they're dealing with it. It seems from the reaction from the community that this may be too fast, too soon, and perhaps we just need to let this one go. So here's what I suspect is going to happen, and I'm trying to give you upfront because you all may have other things to do today. I suspect that the council and I are going to strike this item from the agenda, will not be voted on today. Don't know that it'll ever be voted on again. But certainly if the idea is resurrected in some other form, you will be notified. But I do know many of you came down today. We called for a public hearing, and many of you came down to speak, and you have signed up. And if you have, we will hear from you today if you would like. But if you would like to think at this point that you've accomplished what you intended to accomplish and go about your day, feel free to do that too. It might be more appropriate for you. Any other comments from council in this regard? Kenny, you want to say anything on the legal side?
No, just that one of the main changes in this ordinance would be to require places and homes that are keep six or seven children to get a city license. And they haven't been required to do that in the past. So that's really kind of the main change in these ordinances. And to make them also comply with the daycare center regulations of the city. So we determined that none of the places licensed by DHS to keep up to seven children had received actual notice of the Board of Governors hearing. So we really, the city manager and I both recommended it be sent back to the Board of Governors for them to hold an additional hearing or two and give notice to the people that would actually be affected by this before it comes back to council, if it ever does.
Yeah. Well, we need to be in compliance with state law, and so do the people that run the daycare centers out there. But obviously, this is too fast, too soon. And perhaps something just needs to be changed along the way legislatively. I think we have certainly heard from you. And we don't want to impact the many, many families that rely on daycare services so they can get out and work and have a fruitful life. So anyway, with that as a precursor, feel free to get up now and leave if you'd like. But if you want to stick around for an exciting council meeting, you are encouraged to do so.
Would we seek input from the City County Health Department at this point?
I think we're going to do a couple of things. I think we're going to hold some meetings and get some input from daycare operators. But I think we also want to see what, we're not the only city in the state that is experiencing this disconnect between the state and the city. And so I think we need to see what others are doing to address this. And as the mayor pointed out, it may even take some legislative action to help remedy this. But we don't know that at this time.
All right. We're on item three of the council agenda. It's a series of appointments. I'll look for a motion. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item four is the Journal of Council Proceedings. Item four A is to receive the Journal of Council Proceedings for June 10. And item four B is to approve the Journal of Council Proceedings for both May 27 and June 3. Comments or questions on the journal? All right. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item five is requests for uncontested continuances.
Mayor, just a couple this morning. On page 17, under item eight F1, item A, 6500 South Country Club Drive, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item B, 916 Greenville Road, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item F, 4913 South Woodward Avenue, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. And item I, 2233 Northwest 32nd Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured.
All right. Any other requests for uncontested continuances? We're assess the council meeting. Convene is the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. There are six items. We have a motion. Do we have a second? Comments or questions on the MFA?
I did have one quick question, Mayor, if I could. And this is on item E. It's a retainer providing legal services in our workers' compensation area. And I was just curious how that retainer number related to our actual expenditures for a year. And is it a true retainer, Kenny, that we bill against, or is it a flat fee?
I would have to check on that. Let me get the answer to that, and I'll get back with you by the time you get to items from council.
Great.
I'm pretty sure it's not a flat fee. I think they draw on it. But let us, here comes Greg Freeman.
Here comes Greg Freeman.
I hear the question again. I'm sorry. The first part of it.
The question was with regard to the retainer for our workers' compensation council. I'm going to assume it's not a flat fee. Did they charge against that retainer at an hourly rate? And does the amount of the retainer roughly, is it roughly equivalent to what we spend on an annual basis?
It actually is a flat fee that we've had, that we've agreed to over a period. We do have an increase this year. It actually had decreased back in 2007 or 2008 when the budget was really tight. We had an increase since that time. And so there's an increase this year, but it's a flat fee. And we monitor the number of cases and all that we have rolling through. But it is a flat fee regardless of how many they carry.
Okay. Thank you.
And I would say on that, that those are two attorneys that have over 30 years of experience in workers' comp law. And we also get the resources of their firm. So that's really a good deal.
All right. We're voting on the MFA. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OCPPA. Convene is the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust. Six items. Okay, we have a motion in a second.
You want to have a question?
Yeah, Pat.
On OCETA, we're going out for bids. We've got the bids solicited. We're going out for a ward of contract. And I wondered if there's any chance, if this doesn't cost a lot more, we could get those in a different color, in blue, perhaps green, to sort of reinforce the environmental aspect of it. And I just thought...
We can look into that and see if they're altered. I think we're going out for a whole system renewal in another year or so. That might be a more appropriate time to do that, but we'd be happy to look at it.
It's not something that has to be done right away. But I think over the long haul, we might benefit slightly from that, encouraging our citizens to participate in it.
All right. Ready to vote the EAT? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC EAT and recommence the council meeting with the consent docket. All right. Are there any individual considerations on the consent docket?
Your Honor, AD, Alpha Dog, and Alpha EZ, there was very similar ideas.
You said AD and AE?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And Mayor, I had 6I1, 6V, 6X, and 6Z and 6AA are also really the same issue.
And Mr. Mayor, 6Y.
Y?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Pat, you want to get started with item AD?
Yes, sir. This is just something I want to point out to the public. This is a temporary easement on a project that isn't expected to begin until 2018. And I was concerned that the temporary easement aspect of it might be lost. And I found out that there's been a change in policy at the Public Works Association, Public Works Department, that they will record these temporary easements in order to ensure that everybody's aware of the fact that easement has been planned. And AE are the same kind of deal. So I wanted to make the public aware of that. So, thank you.
Meg, item I-1?
Great. Thank you, Mayor. That 6I1 is a renewal of our contract with BidSync. And I just really wanted to check with Francis to see, I think this is the first annual renewal and how it's working. Are you happy with it?
Yes, we're very satisfied. We are receiving a lot more viewers who are looking at our bids. But yet I think Amy Simpson can agree, we're contracting with the lowest and best bidder, who is usually a previous contractor. So it's validating that we are getting the lowest and best, even advertising nationwide.
Great. I think on procurement bids, we've definitely seen an improvement as far as our process and making sure that we're reaching our vendors. And our current vendors are still bidding, even though we may be receiving a few bids from other vendors. Our current vendors have pretty much been on board and are all bidding. And it's really nice that our bid tabulations, it's already tabulated. So it saved us a lot of award time this year as far as typing up bid tabulations. So we're really happy with it in procurement. Great. Have you had any negative feedback from people bidding? I mean, there's been one or two vendors that maybe aren't as technical, but they've came along. So I think they're, once they do it once, they see that it's not as complicated as it seems. So... Sounds like a real improvement. Thank you. 6V, Mayor, is in a ward of a contract to Lingo Construction for the city's portion of the work on Kerr Park. And I just wanted to let folks know that, you know, that is underway. It seems like years that we've been, this project has been underway. And I just wanted to remind everybody that this is a partnership, public-private partnership between the city of Oklahoma City and Sandridge Energy. Our portion is a little bit over $1 million. That was part of the 2007 bond issue. And Sandridge is contributing substantially more than that to bring the park up to the same standard that the Sandridge Commons campus is. And I'm not sure what the ultimate timeline is.
Eric, can you help us on that?
Eric, if you knew what the opening date might be?
Yes. The current status is the city work should be finished this fall. Sandridge plans to bid their portion beginning this fall with the anticipation that it could be done as early as next year. So in 2015.
Great. Thank you. And Eric, you might stay there. I just also wanted to mention in X, I think people in and around downtown, people visiting downtown, have probably noticed that the white striping on some of our Project 180 streets at the intersections and things doesn't look like it was just done the way it was. And we've had some trouble with the paint. And so this contract is to address that. And I thought it might be a good idea if you wouldn't mind just mentioning kind of what the conditions are and how we're going to fix it.
Yeah, we'd be happy to. In the early Project 180 phases, we were using a thermoplastic painting system, which is a real traditional painting system. It's not a new painting system, but one we use regularly on our asphalt streets. And downtown, as most know, it's a concrete street system. And there was also a change in the formula in thermoplastic in 2009. What we found is that the new thermoplastic does not stick well to concrete. We also visit with other municipalities, and they are learning the same thing as the State Department of Transportation has as well. So today, the item is to change the type of paint. We're going to change it to a multi-polymers, an epoxy-based paint. And our goal is to go back out and repaint those streets to get them back up to the level that we would expect.
And Eric, the third one's for you too. And I just wanted to double check. This is actually accepting the project and putting the maintenance bonds in place for all the street resurfacing that was done in and around heritage hills. And we did have some issues as that project was ongoing with leveling manhole covers and getting the striping done. I've driven most of it, and it looks like it is complete. But I just wanted to be sure that we were comfortable that it was completed up to the standard that you expected.
Yes, it is complete. And I think most are familiar with the work that was in north downtown. It did take a little longer than we anticipated. And the only reason for that is that we, the city, actually coordinated with several of the utility companies to also do some needed upgrades in the area as well. So there were some times where the utilities were running into a few issues. And we may have not seen as many street crews on the streets actually do the resurfacing. And I think that just generally, the resurfacing of some of those older neighborhoods, I mean, it is challenging. We're working with an older street. Obviously, a lot of neighborhood resurfacing is challenging in itself with those that park on the street. But no, the work is complete. It's in excellent condition.
Great. Thank you very much, Eric. Appreciate your help with that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And this question is for Eric. This project, as a matter of fact, a total of 14 projects as it relates to street resurfacing from northeast 16th through 23rd, from Kelly to Martin Luther King. Eric, can you please explain the source of the funds for these 14 projects?
If I may ask, which item are we on? Are we on 6Y?
Oh, I'm sorry. 6Y.
Yes, 6Y. 6Y is 2007 Geo Bond Funds for those 14 locations. So these are residential resurfacing projects that are included as the 2007.
All right. So again, a total of 14 projects from northeast 16th through 23rd, from Kelly to Martin Luther King. All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Ready to vote the consent docket?
Mayor, we'd ask that item AN be polled and voted separately. Those are the Golt Bonds sales that are out there. And Bond Council says it's okay in the consent docket, but they'd really prefer that it be voted on separately.
All right. Well, why don't we amend then the motion that we had previously to include all of items on the consent docket except for item AN. All right. All right. So we're voting on the consent docket minus that one item, and it passed unanimously. How about a motion on AN? Cast your votes, and that item passes separately unanimously. We're on to item seven. This is the concurrence docket. Okay, just two items today. Is there anyone would like to speak on either of these two items? All right. Cast your votes, and it passed unanimously. We're on to item eight. These are items that require a separate vote. The first begins a series of zoning cases. The first is in Ward Four at 924 Southeast 44th Street. It's currently C3, Community Commercial, and it would become an I-1 Light Industrial District. Pete?
Anyone here to speak on this matter? There were no protests, and I move approval.
All right. We're going to vote on item eight A-1. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item eight A-2 is a zoning case in Ward Six at 916 Southwest 29th Street. It's currently I-1 Light Industrial and R-1 Single Family Residential, and it'd become a new simplified plan unit development. Meg?
Thank you, Mayor. Is there anyone here to speak on this item? This is a stretch of Southwest 29th Street that is, I don't know, famous may not be the right word, but it's renowned, I guess, for automobile dealerships. I am really pleased, I don't know whether David Castillo's here, but I'm really pleased to report and to learn that Chip Oppenheim has recently taken on the challenge of trying to reorganize a business improvement district along Southwest 29th Street. He's working very closely with the business owners. And I think there's a lot of enthusiasm to do that. So I expect we're going to see some really good things along the street. There were no protests at the planning commission, so I would move approval of...
I've driven most of it, and it looks like it is complete, but I just wanted to be sure that we were comfortable that it was completed up to the standard that you expected.
Yes, it is complete, and I think most are familiar with the work that was in north downtown. It did take a little longer than we anticipated. And the only reason for that is that we, the city, actually coordinated with several of the utility companies to also do some needed upgrades in the area as well. So, there were some times where the utilities were running into a few issues, and we may have not seen as many street crews on the streets actually do the resurfacing. And I think that, just generally, the resurfacing of some of those older neighborhoods, I mean, it is challenging. We're working with an older street, obviously, a lot of neighborhood resurfacing is challenging in itself with those that park on the street, but no, the work is complete, it's in excellent condition.
Great, thank you very much, Eric, appreciate your help with that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and this question is for Eric. This project, as a matter of fact, it's a total of 14 projects as it relates to street resurfacing from northeast 16th through 23rd, from Kelly to Martin Luther King. Eric, can you please explain the source of the funds for these 14 projects?
If I may ask, which item are we on, are we on 6Y?
Oh, I'm sorry, 6Y.
Yes, 6Y. 6Y is 2007 Geo Bond Funds for those 14 locations. So these are residential resurfacing projects that are included as the 2007.
All right, so, again, the total of 14 projects from northeast 16th through 23rd, from Kelly to Martin Luther King. All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, ready to vote the consent docket?
Mayor, we'd ask that item AN be polled and voted separately. Those are the Golt Bonds sales that are out there, and Bond Council says it's okay on the consent docket, but they'd really prefer that it be voted on separately.
All right, well, why don't we amend then the motion that we had previously to include all of items on the consent docket except for item AN? All right, all right, so we're voting on the consent docket minus that one item, and it passes unanimously? How about a motion on AN? Cast your votes, and that item passes separately unanimously. We're on to item 7, this is the concurrence docket. Okay, just two items today, is there anyone would like to speak on either of these two items? All right, cast your votes, and it passes unanimously. We're on to item 8, these are items that require a separate vote. The first begins a series of zoning cases. The first is in Ward 4 at 924 Southeast 44th Street. It's currently C-3, community commercial, and it would become an I-1 light industrial district. Pete?
Anyone here to speak on this matter? There were no protests, and I move approval.
All right, we're going to vote on item 8A-1, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 8A-2 is a zoning case in Ward 6 at 916 Southwest 29th Street. It's currently I-1 light industrial and R-1 single-family residential, and it'd become a new simplified plan unit development. Meg?
Thank you, Mayor. Is there anyone here to speak on this item? This is a stretch of Southwest 29th Street that is, I don't, famous may not be the right word, but it's renowned, I guess, for automobile dealerships. I am really pleased, I don't know whether David Castillo's here, but I'm really pleased to report and to learn that Chip Oppenheim has recently taken on the challenge of trying to reorganize a business improvement district along Southwest 29th Street. He's working very closely with the business owners, and I think there's a lot of enthusiasm to do that, so I expect we're going to see some really good things along the street. There were no protests at the planning commission, so I would move approval of this item.
Second.
All right, we're voting on item 8A-2, cast your votes, and it passes unanimously. Item 8A-3 is a zoning case in Ward 2 at 3104 Northwestern Avenue. It's currently a plan unit development and would be put together into a new spud. Ed?
Has anybody signed up to speak?
No.
There was no protest, unanimous approval, this is expanding the zoning from a PUD to a spud, I move for approval.
Ed, could I just ask a question? Is there a plan for this at all? Or are they just up changing the zoning? I didn't see what they were going to do with it.
Right now, it's only zoned for auto repair, and they're expanding, I'm not aware of what specific.
Troy Humphries is here, maybe he can share with us what his thoughts are.
Hi, good morning. The intended use is just to provide a little bit more flexibility for the building itself. It's currently, or was, a scooter repair shop. And so, the uses that we're proposing or asking for are much less intensive, just storage for some people that may be moving into the rise, small shop stuff. There's no intended set use.
It looked like the restrictions are things like fast food and.
Absolutely, yeah.
It can't be high intensity.
Absolutely, yeah, we tried to really remove all of the high-intensity, you know, heavy nuisance to the neighborhoods, strike all those uses, so it's really a neighborhood-type atmosphere.
Okay, but the current zoning, had it restricted to?
It was actually automobile repair.
Okay.
And just to the north of that is actually a similar type of use, automobile repair, sales kind of deal, so.
Good, all righty, thank you.
All right, cast your votes on item 8A-3, and it passes unanimously. Item 8A-4 is a zoning case in Ward 1 at 4121 North Sarah Road. It's currently R-1 single-family residential, and it would be put into a new simplified plan unit development. James?
Has anybody signed up?
No.
Is the applicant here? I had one question. The, right now, there's one house on the lot, and it's obviously a really big lot. What, is it still going to be used as a residential home?
Yes.
Or is it still going to be occupied and everything?
It'll still be occupied, yeah, the owner of this property, he still lives there, so yes.
Okay. That was really the only question I had. Same thing, there hadn't been any protests, so I move for approval.
All right, we're voting on item 8A-4, and it passes unanimously.
Thank you.
8B would close a portion of a right-of-way on Southeast 74th Street, east of South Sooner, it's in Ward 4. Pete, you okay with this?
Yes, I move approval with a comment. I think, I've looked at this, and this appears to be necessary to do this, to facilitate this new emergency care facility there. I just want to be sure that we're not doing something similar to what we did on the other, on the southwest corner of that intersection where the heart hospital is. What we did there was, we ended up closing access, and we don't have, we don't have an access road that runs all the way from one, from Sunny Lane to Sooner now, it dead ends in the hospital. And I've looked at this, and I don't think it's going to get us in that same trap, but I want to be sure that it doesn't.
Yes, sir, Mr. White, my name is Steve McHale, and I represent the applicant. I don't think it does. My understanding is it does.
Well, it doesn't look like it does, but it just, I want to be sure that you, that because I don't know how that happened on the southwest corner, but it's turned into, it's created a long-term, forever problem at that intersection that'll probably never be reconciled now, because that access road dead-ending into the hospital.
Right.
This is existing statutory right-of-way, but 74th Street went jogged north here, and it's in, so this shouldn't affect that. Yeah, I don't think it'll affect the one that I'm complaining, concerned about. Complaining is probably a good word, too. But I just want to be sure that we don't replicate that problem again, ever, anywhere. I mean, that's going to be a traffic and a reconstruction nightmare there, and I just want to be sure we're not doing that in any way.
And I don't believe it does, sir.
Okay, also, it gives me an opportunity to complain about how bad I dislike the way we did it the last time, so.
I move approval.
We're voting on item 8B, cast your votes, passed unanimously. Item 8C is an item that's to the council for the third time, so this will be for a final vote. This would establish a petty cash fund for the code enforcement. All right, cast your votes, it passed unanimously. And item 8D is the childcare issue. How about a motion to strike?
I'll hold second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to strike. Any comments from council before we strike it? All right, item is struck from the agenda. We do have a number of people, though, that I mentioned have signed up, so this item is no longer on the agenda, will not be voted on today. We're going to send it back to our staff and have them do some additional investigation. I don't suspect it's going to be coming back to us anytime soon, if ever, and it may be that the state legislature needs to get involved and kind of address this for us and other cities that are dealing with it. Nonetheless, if you want to come down and talk to the council about the issue that we're not going to discuss, we're here for you. I will ask everyone that does come, I'll call the names, and then come up and keep your comments to less than three minutes. All right, Christine Lane?
I don't want to.
Okay. Amy Palumbo?
Yes, sir.
Good morning.
Good morning. Amy, I will need your name and address for the record.
Sure, Amy Palumbo, I'm an attorney. My home address is 10716 Admiral Drive in Oklahoma City. We live in Ski Island. This is my daughter Lucy.
Hello, Lucy.
Hello.
Last night, I was invited to attend a meeting that took place, that was a grassroots, basically, crisis panic about this situation, and I'd like to bring a few things to your attention. Number one, I think that there's a lot of problems with the transparency of this issue, there's a lot of questions about who's on this OCCA board, why there is not a member of somebody, of a small and home daycare provider who is also a member of that board and helping to make decisions and draft this appropriately. You mentioned notice, that folks will get notice. I think it's safe to say, most home daycare providers don't subscribe to the general record. Could you tell these folks how they will receive notice, what agency or entity they could be expecting to hear notice from? Because there's a lot of panic about this situation, that there's a lot of concern that these folks will not be able to comply financially to make ends meet if something like this does pass, and if they can be apprised of what they should look for, that would help. I think that if you do revisit this issue again, please, please make it crystal clear exactly what is expected of these folks. Calls to fire marshals brought a myriad of answers, nobody seemed to have any type of direction as to what would be required of these folks. I think that you would really, really be best served to put some folks who are here today on your board that's going to be drafting this or revisiting it, and I'd be happy to help in that, I'd be happy to help in that if I could.
All right, thanks, Amy. Iris Miller?
Hi.
Good morning. You might want to pull that down a little bit, and you'll need your name and address for the record.
As you've already struck and everything.
Iris, we need your name and address for the record.
My name's Iris Muller, and my address is 11725 Greenwick Drive, Oklahoma City. I represent my daughters because they're at home doing in-home daycare, but they were panicked, and he said, Mr. Kenneth Jordan said that they were going to address this once more eventually. I agree with the young lady that came from Ski Island. No one was given any kind of fair warning, and when they do address that, they do need representation, whereas right now, it's all daycare centers. There's a completely different environment from a daycare center to a home. These young women and men that are involved in home daycares are worried or concerned about is that the city, or an entity, is going to stuff something down all people's throats that they aren't ready for. It's taking away the parental right to take a child to a home versus an institution. We already have too many people that are questioning the end results of institutionalized children. And my proposal is, is that we look into it a little bit deeper as to, it's bad enough that moms and dads both have to go to work, but is it a city or a state's right to tell a parent where they take their child to? I do understand that there should be regulations, and that's what we have DHS there for. They are quite equipped and educated on how to find bad homes, as they are bad centers. And I would just like to reiterate that it's very important that these women and men that are in this particular situation have representation when it is visited, whether by state or even the city. Thank you.
Thanks, Iris. Deborah Hunter?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have letters.
Deborah, I'll need your name and address for the record, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. All right. My name's Deborah Hunter, and I live at 1103 West Gemini Road in Edmond, Oklahoma. I know that this is about Oklahoma City, but I also know that if this were to pass, that eventually it would also affect me and others in the area. I brought letters from some of my parents, and I just wanted to kind of give those out.
Okay, sure. Mickey, would you mind passing those to council?
Thank you for the opportunity for us to speak. I've been a home childcare provider for 11 years, and I've taken care of about 45 children in my home and their families. We're real close still with those children. I've watched them grow up from the time they were infants, and I still have a lot of communication with their parents and families. I just want you guys to know that we, providers that are in our homes, we establish relationships with the families that last beyond their infancy. And it's important for us to keep childcare in our homes for our livelihood, for our families, and for the families that choose childcare in home.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Jason Collins?
Do you mind if I go first out of line?
Okay.
Is it okay if you come back to the end of the show?
No, why don't you come on up now?
That's all right.
This isn't exactly what we had planned, but I appreciate you giving this opportunity to speak.
I'll need your name and address for the record.
I will give it to you, I apologize. My name is Jason Collins, I live at 8528 Northwest 90th Street. I am actually coming to you as a concerned citizen from Ward 8. First of all, again, thank you for allowing us to speak, I appreciate it. What we have heard so far today is just a small fraction of how this ordinance will affect the home daycares and families, as well as the negative impact it will have on the government programs and the City of Oklahoma City. Clearly, there are several issues that need to be addressed, and I apologize if I'm a little tore up about this. There are several issues that need to be addressed, and hopefully, we'll be able to bring to light to you just how important a review and a true investigation is needed into this ordinance. To be honest, do we truly know this ordinance is necessary? And if so, what and who brought this about, considering that there's already several rules and regulations that are set forth to protect daycare providers and the children in our care alike? I'm not sure if we do or not, but I'd like to make sure we keep that in mind. If I may ask one request, when we leave here today, all of you, please keep in mind how important your voice and decision is for not only the citizens, but also the city that you represent. When making a decision, remember the parents who you serve, I'm sorry, when making a decision is to be made, remember the parents. You choose, we choose our homes, basically, have chosen us for a reason, and I'm sorry, I'm going to break away from this because it's just too hard to read. The parents who come to us actually choose us for a main reason, and that is because they put the faith and trust in us, that our homes are safe, and we provide the best care that we can possibly provide, even going beyond what is asked of us. There are several rules and regulations, and I understand that you need to be implemented, and you feel that maybe need to be considered for the safety of our children, but I can promise you, there is no better place than the homes of these home daycares, and I thank you for the time to speak.
Thanks, Jason. Deion Todd?
Okay.
Misty Kaplinger?
Hi, I'm Misty Kaplinger. My address is 8232 Northwest 112th Street. I come to you because right now, one of the things that they are saying you might have to have is an indoor sprinkler system. I, however, do have an indoor sprinkler system in my home. The people that installed it in my home ran an assisted living center for Alzheimer's patients in my home before I bought it, and whenever we did go to the closing, they told us that they spent $10,000 putting that in the home. So, if that was something to talk about with the fire marshals, a lot of these parents or providers don't have that kind of money laying around to put in their homes, or if they rent their homes, are their landlords going to allow them to put that in the home that they're running the home daycare out of? Also, I have a small daycare, according to DHS ratios, which means I care for one to seven children on my license. Two of those children are my children. I have a three-year-old and a 14-month-old that are my kids. As of the proposed ordinance that was thrown out for now, but maybe revisited, they had proposed that a small home would be from one to five, and then a large home would be six to 12. In my case, that would mean two of my children would be considered in the ratio. Therefore, I would make an income off of three children, which would initially make me either have to close my home daycare or kick two of my loving children out. Also, if I were to choose to become a large family home daycare as a proposed ratios from the ordinance that was stricken out but may be revisited, I could become a large family daycare if I got the education available to me. I have my bachelor's degree in human resource management from UCO. Unfortunately, none of those credit hours contain anything to do with children. The DHS requirement book qualifications of caregivers for a large family home, you have to have six months of satisfactory experience as a primary caregiver. I have that. Meet one of the requirements listed in items I through IV. A high school diploma or general education, or GED. 12 college credit hours in child development or early childhood education. A VOTEC occupational childcare program diploma. A child development associate CDA credential, or an associate or bachelor degree in child development or early childhood education. Therefore, I would have to go back to school. And who knows what type of time that would take, how much money that would cost, and me, myself, and my husband, we have six of our own kids to provide for, ages 18 through 14 months old. So, we do not have this kind of money laying around, or even the time, because we are running kids from this thing to this thing, we are basically chauffeurs, so. But anyways, that is what I have.
All right, thanks for coming down. Jennifer King?
Jennifer King, my address is 2205 Vanishing Trail. I do live in Edmond, but again, if this city ordinance is passed in Oklahoma City, my fear is that it would also pass in Edmond and then affect all of us that live there. My concern today is on unlicensed childcare facilities. If this ordinance is passed, there will be many providers that are currently licensed through DHS that would be caused, that would be, that would have to close their homes legally and choose to operate underground.
Right. Thanks for coming down. Jennifer King?
Jennifer King. My address is 2205 Vanishing Trail. I do live in Edmond. But again, if this city ordinance is passed in Oklahoma City, my fear is that it would also pass in Edmond and then affect all of us that live there. My concern today is on unlicensed childcare facilities. If this ordinance is passed, there will be many providers that are currently licensed through DHS that would be caused, that would be, that would have to close their homes legally and choose to operate underground and not be licensed. Therefore, those children in those homes would no longer be monitored. They would not have to keep up with training and it would just be a bad situation for those families. The other concern would be that now the neighbors or the family friends might decide, well, if you can't go to a licensed facility, I will just start watching your children. Those people are not fingerprinted. They do not have CPR and first aid. They don't have any kind of background or training in childcare. And so, unlicensed facilities would then be on the rise, causing DHS workers then to also have to spend a lot of time going out and working those complaints. So just keep that in mind as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Jennifer. Deborah Monroe?
Deborah Monroe, 1724 Northwest 177th Street. I'm on the edge of Ward 8 and I have some letters from some childcare parents. Good morning. I'm speaking on behalf of the childcare parents and forgive me for reading, but these are snippets out of those letters of what my parents have said. When I was in college, I worked at La Petite in Edmond, Oklahoma. I was in charge of 15 four-year-olds in the afternoon. With a class this large, I was never able to give the children the love and attention they had deserved. When I was pregnant with my daughter, I became the search. I began the search for a home daycare. We had friends that used Deborah for their son's care. I asked many questions and met with Deborah prior to my daughter's arrival. I knew that I'd found the home daycare provider for us. My daughter and son were in Deborah's home from 2004 to 2010. I could not have asked for a more loving environment. The smaller number of children in her home enabled her to care, care for, teach, and love my children as they were her own. I totally believe that home daycare providers are a blessing and should not be treated as a commercial daycare center. We heard of Deborah's in-home daycare from close personal friends of ours. When we went to our interview with her, we knew within 30 seconds that we wanted our daughter to stay with her on a daily basis. She welcomed our daughter with open arms, made us feel extremely comfortable, and our daughter was completely calm in her arms. My son attended Deborah's daycare from 1997, age one, through 2004, while my daughter attended from 2001, six weeks old, until 2008. They each left when they went to school full-time. The reasons that I chose a home daycare was size, comfort, individuality, flexible routine, and consistent provider. The main reasons were smaller size and feeling of home. In my children's minds, they went to Deborah's house, not daycare. The lower teacher to child ratio enabled my children to receive more time with the adult, while still having a small group of peers with which to play. My children were with the same person every day. This person grew to love my children as her own. For 18 months, I stayed at home with my son due to a medical condition. I did not want him in a daycare facility where he could be exposed to 50-plus kids and all of their different immune systems and also members of the staff not being able to give him the care and attention he needs. After 18 months, I thought the home daycare option was the best fit. The benefits are, it's a home, so it helps the child feel more comfortable. There's the same person caring for your child, so it establishes a sense of normalcy and stability. And it's a smaller sitting or setting with not as many children versus a daycare facility. I highly recommend this option to everyone. Then I found a job and had to put my then-six-month-old in daycare. We settled on Creative Kids in North OKC. After a few days, each time I would drop my son off, he would scream and give me the most devastating look. That is when we found Deborah. Within just a couple of days, our son was happy. If the in-home daycares are forced to become commercialized, the home atmosphere will be lost, along with the benefits of using the in-home daycare option. Thank you.
Thank you, Deborah. Jessica Rojas?
Hi, my name is Jessica Rojas. I live at 8501 South Camay Avenue. I am here speaking as a mother of a special needs child. My child is seven years old. He's autistic. He has cystic fibrosis. He's had two major surgeries, which are brain surgery and a spinal cord surgery. There's no way that my son, he also has sensory processing disorder, would ever be able to make it in a daycare center. There's way too many kids for him to, he has anxiety also. There's way too many kids. He'd be overstimulated every day. He would come home throwing tantrums and fits. He can't even handle going to school on his own. He has yet to complete a full year due to surgeries and illnesses. It breaks my heart every day to think that daycare centers are going to be closing and that he will no long, daycare homes would be closing and he would no longer be able to go there. There's no possible way that he can handle it. Thank you.
Thanks, Jessica. Kyle Duncan?
Good morning, Mayor, Council. Thank you for your time. I have a couple of items to read here. One, for someone who could not be here this morning to read. But my name is Kyle Duncan. 5501 Northwest 64th is my address. Technically in War Acres, this ordinance would not affect me, but as many of the other folks have said, you know, what happens in one place, unfortunately, would happen other places too. And currently, the only revenue listed in the proposed ordinance is a minimal $25 fee per year to register for a city license. There are approximately 300 state-licensed childcare homes in the Oklahoma City metro area that are monitored by a state entity periodically within a year. Based on these numbers alone, if one person was hired to enforce, monitor, and inspect the proposed ordinance and paid minimal wage of 725 times 40 hours per week, 52 weeks would be $15,080 a year would be needed to support one person's yearly minimal salary. Now, this doesn't include the state and federal employment taxes. The minimum guaranteed revenue would be $25 per year. Per childcare home would not be enough to cover the yearly wages and expenses of one worker with a minimum workload of 300 childcare homes, even if the worker is paid minimum wage. Keep in mind that fines for non-compliance issues cannot be calculated as revenue until the fine is actually imposed. In addition to daycare homes needing monitors, daycare centers would also need to be monitored. It takes approximately 15 state-licensed specialists to monitor 300 childcare homes. This doesn't include the number of licensed specialists needed to monitor daycare centers. Listed in the financial impact statement, the projected cost to the city of Oklahoma City and citizens is reported as none. Now, the question I have is, what agency would be responsible for enforcing, monitoring, and inspecting the proposed ordinance? And what would funding to support the salaries for monitoring that agency come from? That's one item I wanted to talk about. And this, again, is from someone who was not able to be here this morning. But since I'm a large home daycare assistant, I worked for one year with my current employer. I want to start my own home daycare, but not sure I'll be able to now with all these new rules and ordinances. Also, a parent, I see this from both points of view. Even if I was forced to somewhere, forced somewhere elsewhere to work, I could never leave my girls at a center. I refuse. I have the right as a parent to choose who watches my girls. That being said, let me tell you a little bit how I feel about the business aspect of all of this. Let's say, for example, a person wanted to start a commercial business. A restaurant, clothing store, even a daycare. This person would know going into it what they're starting, a commercial business. They would expect to have met zoning codes, fire codes, and a whole lot of other codes that honestly don't know a thing about. They realize that if they can't meet these expectations, they will not have a business. They do not have to, they do not start out as a small home business and forced in one month's time to comply with standards of a commercialized business. No one in the correct frame of mind can honestly expect that of someone. We're talking thousands upon thousands of dollars coming from the sole proprietor's pocket. We cannot get business loans to make renovations like a commercialized business. We're real people with a budget and a love for what we do. We do not want to be commercial. The parents do not want us to be commercial. It would take away from what we are. If they want a center, they will go to a center. That being said, their homeowners associations will not even allow us to be commercial centers in the neighborhood and could quite literally be forcing people out of their very homes if this were to pass. Thanks, guys, for your time.
Kyle, thanks. Brad Amon?
Good morning. My name is Brad Amon. I live at 12405 Eric Field Place, 73142. Actually, brought my cry in the wilderness. Okay. My name is Brad. Like I said, me and my wife, we have a small family childcare. Right now, we have six children, other than my own boys that we care for and love dearly. If this ordinance is passed in the law, our ratio will be pushed down and we'll only be able to take care of another four children because our youngest son is counted in this ratio. This means we would have to choose which two kids we're going to chop. Which two kids are we going to let go? These kids are like our family. Some of these kids are going through a divorce. Some of these kids have separated families, their parents. Some of them are expecting new babies. That's a stressful time in a kid's life. That like, I'm the baby, but wait, we've got a new baby. They start wondering, who am I? It's very stressful for them. It's really not a good time for any of them to be uprooted from our home that has been a constant in their lives. We already sacrificed tremendously, as you can imagine, for a family of six to live off of the sole income of our childcare. Taking away two children would break our budget and will shut us down. This, the reason we do this together instead of pursuing other careers is so we can provide our family, provide for our family while being able to homeschool our special needs sons. I have two. We tried the public schools and they were not equipped to work with our boys. And we are unable to afford special needs private school. Our boys are flourishing in our home learning environment. They're doing well. They're happy and they're no longer bullied, something I couldn't count on in the public school system. We have invested our time, effort, and heart into our family childcare. We have found a system that works and our family depends on it. We are hoping to expand to a large childcare in the fall, but that would be impossible if these mandates go through. We love our kids, okay, and they love us. There's been plenty of times when they've called my wife mommy. I've sat down and they come to me with the biggest smiles on their face. I know they viewed me as some sort of parental father figure to them. All they want is a hug and a kind word. It would be a shame, it'd be a tragedy if this was mandated. It's unfair to these kids. It's definitely unfair to us as childcare providers. Thank you.
Thanks, Brad. Lindsay Duncan?
Good morning. My name is Lindsay Duncan. I live at 5501 Northwest 64th Street. I own a childcare home in War Acres. I'm licensed both through DHS and War Acres. We, as a group, are here to represent the childcare homes of Oklahoma City. We have been told this proposed childcare ordinance is to be stricken on July 1st and to be sent back for a rewrite. We call for that action to take place. We initiate an investigation into the conflict of interest events on the side of Oklahoma City that have taken place in trying to pass this ordinance and a call to repeal the childcare home ordinance that was passed in 2000, I'm sorry, 2010 without notice to childcare homeowners or public notice or knowledge. We call for an explanation of the city budget report that shows expenses for notifying licensed childcare homes in Oklahoma City when indeed they were not notified. We call for the city, we call for the removal of Kathy Cronmiller from the board that wrote this ordinance and as the president of the Oklahoma Child Care Association, which both were appointed by Mayor Mick Cornet, to my knowledge. And that she be replaced with a childcare center worker with less of a vested interest and a childcare homeowner of which we, as owners, would like future input in nominating. Kathy Cronmiller owns a minimum of six large childcare centers and may have plans to build more centers to care for the kids this ordinance would put out. This is a conflict of interest. Once this has been done, we are willing to work with the board, with DHS, and with Oklahoma City to create an appropriate Oklahoma City licensing policy of small and large childcare homes, should you decide that the lengthy DHS requirements are not enough to ensure the safety of our precious babies. DHS does a great job of regulating childcare homes and already has a large packet of requirements for childcare homes and centers. DHS classifies three separate groups of childcare into small childcare homes, which cares for one to seven children, large childcare homes, which cares for eight to 12 children, and centers. They regulate personnel, fire safety, food safety, diaper changes, feeding, sleeping, toys, education, transportation, sanitation, toxins, emergency plans, fire drills, tornado drills, attendance, information boards, enrollment records, staff, illness, outside play, and so much more. They occasionally implement changes or add requirements. And while it may be annoying, we understand that the changes are necessary and that they occur. Yet they respect that we are among the hardest-working profession and they give us time to comply. If this ordinance were to pass, we would have been given 30 days to comply. We see that timeframe as just plain disrespectful. There are 300, 300-plus DHS licensed home, DHS licensed homes in Oklahoma City and 95% of those homes would have to close if you passed an ordinance with just a small fraction of these unnecessary changes. These homes care for between 3,000 and 5,000 children and account for 4,000 families we serve. And serve is just that. We don't just care, we don't do this just for a paycheck, but we do need that paycheck. The families we serve become part of our families. We love them, we laugh, and we cry with them. We care for children that we have cared for since birth and we watch them develop and grow. Because we could never afford to comply with these requirements, when we close, that puts 4,000 families into losing half or all of their income because they have no childcare. Along with the 336 Oklahoma City providers having to close that will lose half or all of their family's income. Our support services, businesses, and organizations will have to close because they will have no one to serve and those people will be out of work as well. The impact this ordinance will have on Oklahoma City is devastating. You are calling for the commercialization of our homes. We are here to say that these are our homes. We choose to work from home and we have a right to make that choice. We are saying, don't take away that right, please, by commercializing our homes. Homeowner associations won't even allow commercialization in neighborhoods. And then it comes to the wee little part of trying to lower the number of children we can keep. Some people cannot imagine caring for seven children, but some people make it look so smooth you would be in awe. Some of us don't want to care for seven children, so we choose to care for less, but the option is there. And you are wanting, if you pose, if you pass this, this ordinance is wanting to take away that option by decreasing the number in small homes from seven to five. After you factor in our cost of running our business, we may only profit from those two children. So we would be taking away our entire profit margin and, again, sending us out of business, even if you did not include any other aspect in this ordinance. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Lindsay. Candace Mortez? Katie Nations?
Hi, I'm Katie Nations. My address is 1328 Northwest 20th Street, Oklahoma City. And I'm here as a parent. As my employer can tell you, I took three maternity leaves in 38 months. So I have a four-year-old, a two-and-a-half-year-old, and a 15-month-old. It's been a busy time in our lives. I think that you guys have heard wonderful facts and you've heard wonderful points and so I won't belabor the issue of going over the numbers again. But this is something that is highly emotional. When I heard about this last Friday, the thoughts were running through my head of, if I don't have my home childcare provider, I'm going to have to quit my job. That's our only option. Tasha has taken care of each of my children since the time they were eight weeks old. There's no other choice for us. And it just felt like such a shock and such a panic when this started getting around on Friday afternoon. So if you would just please take into consideration, this definitely affects the livelihood of everyone here who owns a facility or runs a small business out of their home, but it also affects all of us that are working parents and trust and have this unique relationship with our childcare providers. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Jason Nations?
Okay, he has a leave, but he agrees.
All right. Noted. Mary Ann C. Reyes? Krista Wykoff? Deborah Birch?
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Debbie Bunch and I live at 12309 Northwest 4th Street in Yukon. I live in Yukon, but I'm technically Oklahoma City. If this is passed, it will- If this is passed, it will affect me. I am also the president of United Providers Family Childcare Association of Canadian County. It will affect a lot of the homes in my area. I have owned my own home daycare in Yukon for almost 15 years. I have a degree in early childhood education, a degree in early childhood development, I have a director's certificate, and a certificate of mastery in childhood. I am a large family daycare home. I take care of 12 children with a full-time assistant who has worked for me for five I'm open from Monday through Friday from 7:30 to 5:30. These children are not mine, but we are a family. I had a little boy in my daycare recently who had cancer and he wouldn't have been able to go to a large daycare center. We had to be very careful with what he was exposed to. He survived double kidney cancer and he came back. And his mom is very appreciative that they were able to keep working because if they would have had to quit their job, they wouldn't have had insurance to take care of him. We celebrate holidays together, birthdays, graduations, the birth of siblings together. I hope the kids and families through divorces and even death. I could choose pretty much any job with my degrees and my experience. I've been offered jobs as a director of many daycare centers, at Rose State as the director, but I love what I do. I get to be home with my children. I have a 16-year-old, a 12-year-old, and a 6-year-old, and I've been there since the day they were born. We are a home environment, a more natural environment, if you will. The same environment these children would be in if their mothers could be home as well. I know my home childcare and preschool is making a difference in these children's lives. I know the first time that I see a child read or write their own name, that I had something to do with that. And I am their teacher before they go to school. I'm their first teacher after their parents. And if you pass this, the new regulations, you will not only hurt my family and our way of life, you essentially hurt thousands of other children throughout the state as there are more children in home daycares in the state of Oklahoma than there are in daycare centers. Thank you.
Rachel Williamson?
Hello, my name is Rachel Williamson. I live at 624 Fire Light Drive in Moore. This would affect my family personally because we send our children to a home childcare provider barely inside Oklahoma City city limits. It's in Ward 4. We made contact with Councilman White yesterday in his office, as well as our provider, to express our objections to this because it is not fair to these children. They should not have to change providers because of ordinances that they can't afford to make to their homes, changes they can't afford to make to their homes. They are licensed by DHS for a reason. Those policies are in line with state law. I don't understand what this statement that was made about state law or the city becoming up to standards with state law is about because I believe that DHS policy and state law are one and the same. I wanted my children to go to home daycare because I want them in a family-like setting. I don't want them in a center where they're shuffled and herded from room to room when staff changes or shift changes and they can only have so many children in one room with so many staff members. I want them in a family-like setting where they feel like they have a good relationship with the person taking care of them. Our provider has taken care of my daughter since she was three months old and she's gonna be three in a week. I don't want her to have to change. That would be really traumatizing for her to have to change because our provider closed her doors because of this. The other issue I'd like to address is the transportation of children under three. Our provider keeps her home, her number, small so that she can provide other opportunities for learning outside of her home for the younger children. I don't think it's fair to ask someone or the children to stay in a home all day, every day, in one building, all day. That's ridiculous. That's why we chose a home daycare and not a center. She would have to hire someone to either stay in her home with the younger children while she took her older children to activities, or she would have to take someone else with her to ride in the car, which is ridiculous. That's not what parents do. That's what we want our children to be in that kind of environment for. We want them to be in a family setting where it's the same kind of environment they would be with, like, in if they were with me. So I would just urge you to please reconsider all of this. I don't want my children to have to change providers. I don't want any of these childcare providers to have to close their doors. This is their source of income and livelihood. Thank you.
Thanks, Rachel.
Good morning. Lolita Lucas, 3700 North Windsor Avenue, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma 73122. I'll try not to go over everything there is already said, which is pretty much what I wanted to say, except for I am concerned about possibly some of these, a lot of the kids being displaced, a lot of the parents being displaced. I think that it will become a bigger issue even for the state. And during our meeting last night, a lot of the providers and parents said that they would end up having to go on welfare, collect food stamps, some of us that we would lose our children, we'd have to end up being on unemployment, and that becomes a bigger issue statewide, you know, to have more people have to rely on the state in order to make ends meet. I too have worked a lot of other professional jobs. I worked for law firms, been manager of businesses, things of that nature, and I found this job to be the most rewarding. I had a daughter who was very sick as an infant. She's 14, but she still has issues. There's no way I could have held a job outside of my home because of her issues. My husband was forced to have spinal surgery. I would also have probably lost my job, having to stay home and take care of him, who he couldn't even get out of the bed, but I could only do that because I worked from home. Out of all the jobs I've had, nothing is more rewarding because, as the song goes, the children are our future. And if they don't have something solid, solid foundation in order to be set out into this world, what are we doing? And I don't want this to go back for amendments. I want it to be set on fire and burned, burned, because I just think it's ridiculous. There are so many things and aspects of our lives that we have to have outside people in, and we do have to stay in our business. And I don't mind them being in, "Come on in, get a massage," you know, a massage chair, you know, "Have a cup of coffee, please come in and see what we're doing." I have had so many, I do a preschool program, and I've had so many children leave my home and be the top of their class because of the things that I give them. And I just think that it would just be a disservice to our community, a disservice to all parents if we are forced to turn some of these children that are way too young to be a latchkey kid. I was a latchkey kid, but this is California and this is 100 years ago, where it was safe to go home. Now, today, believe me, there's a weirdo down the street waiting to see their little child go in the house by itself. We don't need that. So please, set it on fire.
Nisha Abdullah?
Hello, my name is Nisha Abdullah. I reside at 3817 Southeast 57th Street. The concerns that I would like to address today are from a parent's perspective as well as a childcare provider. I'm a military wife with six children. We're working on our seventh one. Considering the fact that we are military, of course, I'm subject to being relocated at any given time, as well as my husband being deployed. Being a large childcare provider, definitely next to Tinker, allows me the opportunity to be flexible, be a great mother, help out financially with our children, as well as my country, considering 50% of my children that I keep are military kids. And we know that military kids go through enough with being displaced, as she noted, being relocated and going through enough, so we need to create as much stability for them as we can, and definitely one-on-one attention. Also, a lot of the Tinker, on Tinker, the Air Force Base, the child development centers on base are full. They don't have room for any more children, so of course, that sends them out our way. So again, I feel like I'm serving, again, our country by keeping those children. And then I think it's very important that we have to remember that we're talking about children and families. How will these things affect our children? How will they affect our families? Are there enough centers to accommodate them, these children? How many people will lose their job? And I guess the highlight of it is, you know, us being a childcare provider is so much more than a paycheck. We have the opportunity to give these children the love, support, and attention that some of their parents can't even give them. And I think, again, we have to just remember, we're more than providers. We are a family that some of these children don't have.
Thank you, Nisha.
My name is Paula Kous and my office is located at 4200 Perimeter Center Drive, Suite 235. I'm the executive director of the Oklahoma Childcare Resource and Referral Association. We're a 501(c)(3) organization that contracts with Oklahoma Department of Human Services to provide childcare resource and referral services in all 77 counties of the state of Oklahoma. We provide childcare referrals for parents, providing them with information about how to find good childcare. We work with providers, providing them with training and technical assistance. And the third thing that we do is work in the community to provide data and information about childcare. So I wanted to give you some numbers today. In the state of Oklahoma, as you heard earlier, childcare family homes are licensed one to seven, and in the city of Oklahoma City, there are 164 providers with a licensed capacity of 1,148 children. Large family childcare homes, which serve from eight to 12 children. There are 179 providers with a licensed capacity of 2,127 children, and that makes a total family childcare homes in the city of Oklahoma City of 343 providers with a licensed capacity of 3,275 children. I provided you with a packet of information. One of the things that Okra does is compile information about childcare. So there's information in there about the economic impact of childcare in the state of Oklahoma, the portfolio data packet, which gives you information about childcare across the state of Oklahoma. I also provided you with this specific sheet for Oklahoma County, which tells you how many childcare slots there are, the cost, that kind of information. I also provided you with information from the Childcare Aware of America report. Every other year, they evaluate childcare licensing standards and oversight across the country. And in case you didn't know, Oklahoma, the last time we were ranked in 2012, Oklahoma ranks number one for its licensing and its oversight, and that's particularly important. Primarily, the reasons are because we are so strong in the number of visits that providers receive. They get at least three visits a year, and that there really is very little room for people not to be licensed. If you're operating a childcare facility in your home in Oklahoma, you have to be licensed. The only exceptions, what we call license exempt, is for people who are caring for a related child. So if I were gonna care for a niece or a nephew, or you were gonna care for a grandchild, you wouldn't have to be licensed. And also, if, that thought just completely slipped my mind, there's another reason why you can be license exempt, and I can't remember what it is. So anyway, I just wanted to offer that information to you, offer my agency's expertise as you move forward. If you would like a representative from my agency to help with anything, we're more than willing to give you some assistance.
All right. Thank you, Paula.
Hi, good morning. My name is Amber Reed. I live at 8733 Northwest 92nd Street. I'm coming as a parent. I am an educator and a professional school counselor, and whenever my adopted child needed to go into the daycare facilities, I visited over 35 or 40 daycare facilities. I finally chose a Christian daycare facility, and I left my baby there, and I kick myself every day for this, screaming, a blood-curdling scream, every day. And I cried every day that I left. And I did that for five months, from the time that he was 18 months old until the time that he was almost two. And then my friend came and picked up her daughter and the fire alarm was going off and it was mass chaos. And she saw the director of that daycare center and several of the workers go in, running in, getting their children and no other children, and walking out with them and no other kids. And I said, "Get my son and leave." That's the day that I left. My son is now four, and as we were driving by the other day to that same daycare center, he said, "Mommy, do you remember when I went there? I never want to go back." He was less than two the last time he walked in those doors. Less than two when he walked through those doors. As a counselor, I sit here and I'm like, "What did they do to my baby?" And if I ever find out, DHS will be called. And I'm telling you right now, I praise God every day that I found Sharon because that woman loves my child. She loves him with all her heart, and he has never once cried when I've left him. He runs to her door. He tells me, "Okay, mommy, bye-bye, see you later." I don't have to worry about him. I don't leave there crying. I don't leave there guilty because I have to go take care of my 568 students in Moore, Oklahoma, where I had to take care of them on May 20th when a tornado came through. I don't have to feel guilty about that because I know he's loved and taken care of in Northwest Oklahoma City. So don't shut these people down. Please, don't shut these people down by making them invest tens of thousands of dollars that they don't have to make it available for people like me to take care of babies that are out there in the public school systems that are, I mean, I'm a counselor. I have to take care of 568 kids. I need somebody to take care of my one. Thanks.
Thanks, Amber.
Morning, my name is Ari Connor and I live at 10021 K Ridge, Yukon. And I'm a provider of a large family childcare home, and I have a full-time assistant. She is very hardworking. It's very hard to find somebody that you can keep around and trust. She's at home right now with my substitute while I'm here talking about this. When I found out about this, I was very angry. I'm a very vocal person and I was yelling, crying, told my daycare parents. They're very upset about it. They've already looked at me and said, "Do we need to look for a commercial property to find a place for you and other providers?" Because it's very serious. I rent my home and I would not be able to afford any of the changes that are proposed in this. I can't afford to have a three-sink in my kitchen, let alone fit it in there. My house was built in 1977. I can't afford to have the venting in every single room. I can't afford to have a sprinkler system put in my house. And if I could, where would the children and me go while they're doing all these renovations? I mean, there's nowhere for them to go. I also have to pay my assistant and I have to pay her taxes. I have to pay for her to have training. I have to pay for her to have her CPR classes, which is fine, but then- But then also in the ordinance is you would also have us have to have a cook come in because we wouldn't be able to touch any of the food because we change diapers, no matter if we use gloves and wash our hands or not. I can't afford to pay another employee. And then if I go on field trips, I would have to have someone else come with me. So that's three employees, and I can just afford to have the one. And I would give her all the money in the world if I could, but I can afford to have the one. I can't afford to have any more than that. So what you would do to me is, I'd be closed because I couldn't afford to have a cook, an assistant, a person to sit with me in a driver's seat while I'm driving the children. First of all, I am a staff member. And it's just ridiculous and outrageous. And I agree with what they said earlier, that they need to be burned and not ever brought back up. So, thank you.
Thanks, Ari. Okay, Will, we appreciate everyone that's come down here today. You've had some compelling stories and our heartbreaks for some of your individual circumstances. Obviously, the emotion was evident in the room. I think each of us felt it, and I'm sure each of you came here today with an individual story to tell. And I'm glad we sat through it and listened to each of them. They were all worthwhile for us to hear. I think the last thing anybody wants to do right now is hear from a lawyer. But nonetheless, that's kind of where we are. So why don't we just let Kenny kind of set the record straight? Because many of the concerns that were addressed didn't originate here or don't exist entirely. And Kenny, I guess what I'm asking for is just some reactions to what you heard in general. You can't address every specific concern that came up. But do you have any comments on what you heard today?
Right. This will actually come back for a final hearing on July 1st, but council is going to strike it. It's going to be on the agenda with, where someone can make a motion just to strike that. It'll be sent back to the Board of Governors, and they will have, assuming that they want to take this up again, they will have future hearings on this. And in that regard, there's no way we can know for sure how to contact everyone unless you're welcome to call into my office at 297-2451.
Kenny, this isn't coming back.
Right.
But there are some, but there's some issues here about DHS and state and how we operate as a municipality, and, you know, we're kind of instructed to enforce some laws. Can you address what DHS requires and what changes would this ordinance, had we considered it, made?
The only change this ordinance actually would have made that was a substantive policy change in city licensing requirements would be if you had a home licensed by DHS or a home that kept six or seven children, then you would have needed to get a city license and meet those daycare regulations that are in the city code. So that's really the only change that would have been made by this. It wouldn't actually have affected any of the large family homes that already have eight to 12, or any of the daycare centers that had eight. But it would have changed a daycare center to five or more, and it would have changed a large family home to six to 12. So that's really what it would have done. I'm not familiar with all the DHS requirements. I do know that DHS regulates this entire area. So if you're already keeping kids for pay, you already have to have a license. So I think it's already regulated.
Right.
Mayor, if I could just take a second. Let's go back into where this came from. We're not trying to be punitive to anybody, any home, child operations out there at all. We have a situation where we have state DHS regulations that you are all very familiar with. You know a lot more about that than I do based upon the testimony this morning. We also have the International Fire Code. And the International Fire Code is adopted by the city of Oklahoma City and ordinance, but it's also adopted by the state. And we're not allowed as a city to adopt anything less than what the state has adopted. And there's a break between those two. And so our staff thought we'd try to reconcile that. Apparently, that was a mistake. And so, because, and there are different numbers in there as to what the International Fire Code says and what the DHS requirements are. And again, we adopt the International Fire Code by ordinance, but we are not allowed to adopt something with less standards than what the state has. So there's a break out there in those two things. And that was the catalyst of where this came up with. And obviously, it snowballed downhill very quickly. And so, we've heard what you said today. I think there's a problem there. I'm not sure it's the city's problem, maybe more of a state problem, but there is a break in those two. And that's not new. That's been out there for several years, and we were trying to reconcile that.
Yeah, and the state doesn't let you go and talk like we do in their, so, but we have a legislative committee and Councilman White and, David, are you on legislative committee? Or is it, that's auditing, it's macketing? We have a lot of committees. I think this is worth us bringing up on our legislative agenda going forward for next year's legislative session, just so they can kind of reconcile, you know, the misconception here. Do you have any comments, Larry, and here?
No, I think that's very well said.
Okay.
So we weren't trying to be arbitrary and just coming up with something. We were trying to really fix something in a break between two different areas of state law. And in hindsight, probably really shouldn't have tried to take that on.
Okay.
I had a question. There was a question about notice, about how they're going to be notified. And if the Board of Governors does hear this again, we're basically asking them to notify everybody who's licensed under DHS within the city of Oklahoma City. Is that correct? And they should mail something to their, to the address of wherever they're registered?
Right. We will be asking them to review this further if they want to and to notify all persons that are licensed by DHS for up to seven children. And also, that's why I was saying, if you want to call my office and leave your name, phone number, and email, if the Board of Governors does decide to have any additional hearings on this, I will know about it, and we will be glad to make personal contact with you and let you know that they're going to have a hearing on this.
All right.
Kenny, how is that board, I'm sorry. How is that board appointed?
It's, I believe, appointed by the mayor. And the membership...
Sorry, Mayor.
The membership on that is, actually, as these folks pointed out, there is no representative on that board for family daycare homes. There are daycare center representatives, but there aren't any actual representatives for family daycare homes.
So if that's something that we can take a look at, that might be an idea that we could expand the group.
But this is an ordinance that's been in place for many, many years. It predates Mayor Cornet in having that ordinance established. It's been there for many, many years, and it's, you know, it just hasn't been updated or changed recently.
And I think we do need to address the whole makeup of that board. And if I may, Mayor, I just want to thank these, the small childcare providers for coming out. Their phone calls and emails did work. And I had the opportunity to attend their meeting last night, and I left in tears because to hear some of the stories really touched my heart. So, again, phone calls to this council and also emails to this council did work, and it shows that the people can be involved and engaged in the system that we have in this. Our system of democracy is working here in Oklahoma City.
All right. Thanks, John. Any other comments from council before we move on to the agenda? All right. Again, thank you all for coming down today. We're on item E of the council agenda. This is dilapidated structure.
Just a second. Kenny, can you say your phone number again?
Yes, my phone number, again, in case you missed it, is 297-2451.
Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under item 8E? I'm guessing not. Is there a, is there a motion? Is there a second? Okay, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 8F is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 8F? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 8G is a second public hearing. This has to do with the public safety sales tax. G is for fire, and H is for police. Is there anyone here hoping to speak today under item 8G, the public hearing regarding the public safety sales tax for the fire department? Okay. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. And item 8H is the similar issue, it's just for the police side of it. This is on the public safety sales tax for the police department, item 8H. Is anyone here hoping to speak on this item today?
Yeah.
All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 8I is a request to hold a revocable right-of-way permit with OKC Pride for the OKC Pride Celebration Weekend coming up June 20th through the 22nd. And Kit Steven Myers has come down to speak on this event today.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor.
Good morning. I will need your name and address for the record.
It's Kit Steven Myers, 2321 Northwest 25th Street.
Can you tell us about your event?
Yes, our event is a recurring event since its inception in 1987. This year is very similar to years previous. The parade route is the exact same as previous years, so you'll see that taking place lineup on Northwest Classen, heading north to Northwest 39th, and then back west to Northwest 39th and Penn. The one change that is different this year is our festival, Arts Festival is a two-day festival. Previously, it's been Saturday only, and this year we'll extend that through Sunday. Our block party Friday night is one of the largest pieces of the festival. That includes street closures and the bulk of our permitting.
All right. Is there a motion? It's a ward two. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks, and good luck.
Thank you.
Item 8J is a revocable permit with the Oklahoma City Boathouse Foundation to hold the Stars and Stripes River Festival. Looks like we have a spokesperson.
Yes. The festival is going to be June 28th. It's going to start at 8 with racing, and then, the festival will be from about 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., and it will end with fireworks at night. And during the day, there will be a beer garden, there will be exhibitors, food trucks, and a lot of other fun activities.
And we'll need your name for the record.
Oh, sorry. My name is Kelsey Dolphin.
Thanks, Kelsey.
Thank you.
How about a motion on item 8J? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Good luck. Item 8K is housekeeping reflecting a reorganization of One Oak. Comments or questions on item 8K? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8L, understand we do need executive session? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 8M, understand we do need executive session? Cast your votes. Moves to executive session. And 8N, we do not. So how about a motion to strike? Cast your votes. Item is struck from the agenda. Item 8O is claims recommended for denial. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 8O? All right, how about a motion? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9 is claims recommended for approval. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under item 9? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 10 is items from council. Pat, do you have anything for us today?
Your Honor, a couple of things. Several months ago, the city council approved an ABC license for Soccer City. It was a very long hearing, sort of contentious, the neighborhood didn't want it. But we approved it, and we had some assurances from the management out there that they would take care of the place. We've had some calls recently about the housekeeping out there, trash, whatnot. And I would like to suggest that whoever's in charge of that department, maybe stop by and visit with the management out there, ensure that they're aware of the fact that it was a difficult decision, and they have the commitment to keep it clean. The second thing is, I'd like to ask, we've had some streetscaping projects that really have improved the looks of our streets. Do we have any metrics to measure the effectiveness of those?
Metrics to determine the benefit of streetscaping projects from public perception, economic development activity?
Whatever metrics you, you know, do we have any metrics at all? I guess that's my question.
I don't believe we have established any.
So how do we tell if they're effective or not, so we can incorporate any suggested changes in our new design?
I think I need to get back with my planning folks and public works folks maybe to come up with some...
And the third item I'd like to talk about first for a second, or question, is health-related. We've had a lot of publicity recently on the television about various mosquito-borne diseases. West Nile virus is one of the most serious ones. And there's a brand-new one that's derived from China. And we've got some city-maintained drainage facilities that have water in them. Do we have any program to periodically spray those, control mosquitoes?
Yeah, we do, we do. Not to spray, but we do put down some chemicals in ponds of water that will kill the larvae. I think I'd ask Eric to come in. He knows more about that than I.
Just a question, you know, that since we've had all this publicity, it seems like the city should have some responsibility to go in and monitor at least where the water's collecting within a city-owned or easement-given facility.
Let's see if Eric can come in, talk about what the stormwater quality people do along these lines. Eric, in regard to standing water on city properties, what does the stormwater quality folks do in regard to that?
We do periodic inspections, especially when mosquito season does become evident. Obviously, after a lot of the rains that we've experienced in the past couple of weeks, that is something that comes into question. We work very closely with the Health Department. As the city manager mentioned, we do have some tablets that we can actually put into those waters that make sure that the eggs do not hatch. But we do do that on a case-by-case inspection, and we make sure that there's actually larva present before we treat. I mean, we don't just pre-treat just to treat.
And some of the drainage facilities we have are focused on some natural waterways. Is it homeowner's responsibility to spray those?
If it's privately owned, the answer would be yes. There's also some Health Department programs, I think, that allow them to also have access to some of those same treatment items that will help limit the amount of mosquitoes.
Some way to reduce the threat from...
Right. And in the public areas, we'd be happy to respond to any concerns. And we do periodically receive those in the year, so we do receive those from citizens and respond accordingly.
Thank you.
All right, John?
Eric, before you... Jim, I sent a memo to Parks about Jack Cornet Park. There's a drainage issue out there, as you know, Eric, from years ago, and those rains have had a tremendous amount of water accumulate in the park. Would you put that down to check that for this? Because I asked the question, is there something we need to do for mosquito control over that temporary pond that's been formed?
I'll be happy to do so.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay. John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's close to that time for us to deal with the Indian Culture Center. I'm tired of going down Eastern Street, looking to my right-hand side, seeing that building not be completed. The state has drug its feet far too long, and I think we need to deal with the Indian Culture Center as a city. So I would like to see soon something be done with the Indian, the Native American Culture Center. I am a part of the Cherokee Nation, so I do care about the Native American culture. And so, one of the ways that I think we may be able to help finance it, and this is just me thinking off the top of my head, maybe the Health Science Center may be interested in taking some of the land on, since they want to expand. Hey, let them have a little piece of the land, and we can finish the Culture Center.
Okay. Meg? All right, David? Pete? Larry? Ed?
Don't need an answer today. I'm just hearing conflicting statements from the feds, ODOT, and the city about whether on the boulevard, you can use those funds for street improvements outside the right-of-way. Just wondering if in a couple of weeks, we can get some clarification, because there's conflicting statements from those three entities.
We'd be pleased to do that.
Thanks.
James? All right. And nothing under city manager reports today?
No, sir.
Okay. Carolyn Herr has signed up under Citizens to Be Heard. Good morning, Carolyn.
I'm Carolyn Herr. I live at 2353 Northwest 11th Street in Ward 6. Ms. Salya is our representative. And I'm here today to ask to keep a fence that's across a closed alley. On the left side of the poster board is the ordinance closing the alley. The right side is what I'm speaking about. The center picture on the right side is the fence and bridge supports we put. We bought our house in 2002, and I've spent the last 12 summers clearing over three tons of debris, including condoms, syringes, dead animals, furniture, concrete, and trash, rebuilding by putting dirt... Rebuilding by putting dirt and planting grass. It now looks like lawn. Someone has complained to Action Line that we fenced off the alley. It is a closed alley already. So I'm asking for a variance to keep that fence up. We have seen crime decrease in our backyards. Before this was up, we had thefts of lawn mowers, bicycles, even a van. Just on June the 8th, one block from our house, a dead body was deposited in the alley, which couldn't happen in ours because the fence is up. So I'm here to ask if I could have a variance to keep that fence up, and if this isn't the right place, tell me where to go, because I don't know.
How about, why don't we have someone meet with you outside, and they can give you the direction? But thanks for coming down.
And I maintain six yards responsibility of that alley. My grandson and I cut the grass and clear the trees. And as we keep getting new people buying instead of renters, we get permission to clear theirs. So our goal is to have it cleared from the east to the west.
I can tell you're trying to do the right thing. Thanks, we'll see if we can help you out.
Well, I noticed your first priority there is to provide a safe and secure community, and that's kind of what I'm trying to do, but just in one block.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Carolyn.
Carolyn, if you'll meet with, Bob is here. He'll be happy to meet with you outside. This gentleman here, Bob Teener, is our director.
All right, we have executive session. We'll be back.